You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is December eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting Wednesday, December eighteenth at six P M. We can all stand for the pledge allegiance and being that this is Rich Merzinski, Commissioner Merzinski's last meeting, we'd like you to say the pledge. Start us with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Road call.
Commissioner Merzinski.
Present.
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haney.
Present.
All three present accounted for.
Consider agenda, but before we consider the agenda, we need to add two things under old business. There'll be ten A, the opening of bids for Franklin Street Bridge. And then under ten B, consider permission to approach the council for a hundred thousand dollars in A R P funds for sidewalks, park and park improvements in the town of Hannah.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider approval for December ninth, twenty twenty four minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims, starting with payroll.
Good evening, Commissioners. We have payroll for the period ending twelve thirteen twenty twenty four. The amount of one million five hundred forty thousand seven hundred thirty seven dollars twenty two cents.
Motion to approve payroll is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And then we have operating expense claims in the amount of two million one hundred ninety five thousand seven hundred forty two dollars forty three cents.
Motion to approve the operating expense claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now opening public comment.
Good evening, Mark Parkman, four zero five two South eleven hundred West. I come here tonight to express a little gratitude. First, to the Board of Commissioners for allowing the Highway Department to help with workout at the fairgrounds. The Fair Board and F M E C both been doing a lot out there. And with the help of the county highway, it's made it much easier on us. So thank you for that. As a county resident, I was pulling out a Cypriot sunrise about a month ago. And right across from Kingsbury School there, you could hardly see looking down the road. And so another expression of gratitude to the charity glasser at the Highway Department. I called her and asked if there was anything we do get that brush cut back. And I think by the end of the day, they had somebody out there with a boom mower cutting that back to make it safer for everybody. I don't know if you guys have been out there, but like when the parents come to get the kids, it's lined up on the road all the way down. And you got to pull halfway out to be able to see out of Cypriot Sunrise. So wanted to let you know, we appreciate that. Last, you know, about four years ago, we had an organization here that was, I'm going to say treating our employees, our volunteers and our kids. Not the way it should have been done. And I'm trying not to mention any names because it's improved, it's much better. But at that time, you know, we were just starting to get into this. I'd been fighting it for a while as the four H Council President. And I reached out to Mr. Merzinski to express the concerns about what we had. And by the time we got done all the way to the end, when it got finished, almost every politician was on board. It took everybody to get it done. But Rich, you were the first guy, I believe, the first elected official to come on board, listen to our concerns and then meet with this group and say, it's not happening in La Porte County. You're not going to treat our people like this. It's not going to happen. You drew that line in the sand. And so we're back up to being the way it was before then. It they've really turned it around. And I just wanted to come and say, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for stepping up and helping us out at that time because it was a big deal for our county. We really appreciate it.
It was the right thing to do.
It was, but it so many times it's easy to to not do anything. But you dug right in and like I said, everybody came on board. But if you weren't the first, you were darned close to the first, and I think you were. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Hallfield, six seven eight two east one hundred south Mill Creek. I would also like to say of the probably hundreds of times over the last twenty five years, I've been in front of this dais here. Mr. Merzinski, through the council, through the commission, Lord knows you and I have butted heads multiple times. But we've always come to a conclusion at the end, we need to move on, do what's best for the county. Next time we meet, I will be in your chair. You've given me some advice. I appreciate that. And there's some big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to making the county move forward. And I appreciate everything you've done for me. Thank you, sir.
You know, I worked with your dad in Nippsco. He warned me about you, so.
I'm here for a different reason.
Oh, come on, come on.
Rich might be leaving that seat, but I'm sure we'll see him around and talk to him. I'll be talking to him. I'm here. I dropped us off to the Commissioners. I'm here representing F M E C tonight as the president. We are, as you, we talked, I think, last month, you were informed that by Commissioner Merzinski that the Farm Bureau is giving us the F M E C, Farm Bureau is building a new building. So we're going to take their old building, we're going to pull it back, and we're going to turn it around, and we're going to place it right there where that red spot is. So with the Commissioners owning the property, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with moving that building and getting it in that position. So it's okay. We checked with the Fair Board. They're good with everything. So just wanted to make sure.
I would make a motion that we we okay that. I think it's a good idea.
Yep. So we think we've got it and it's all with, it's not with county money, it's all with inside F M E C money right now.
That's my motion. We allow that.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Sykes, two twelve Lakeside Drive. I would just like to thank you guys and express how great the courthouse looks, all decorated for Christmas. You and Maintenance Department do a great job doing that every year. And it's just fantastic the way it looks. And also, Rich, congratulations on a retirement. And it was a pleasure working with you all these years. I will not be returning to the county after the first of the year. So we can hang out together. But I appreciate everything that you guys done and I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Go Hoosiers.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Go Hoosiers. Go Hoosiers. There you go.
George Callis, torn out of drive, La Porte. Back in June, I came to you asking you to look at something, I'll look at the real estate taxes. Not necessarily taxes, but to charge nonprofits a fee because they get everything we get and pay nothing. We even went back to, they don't pay postage or nothing for what the treasurer puts out and everything. But I haven't heard nothing, what was discussed or what. We just forgot about, correct?
No, it wasn't forgotten. I actually talked to the, our previous attorney about it. And it was discussed that you cannot charge a fee to nonprofit.
And we put a fee on recycling on a bill. Why can't we just call it a fire police fund or I don't know what you call it?
Well, again, this is a public comment, so we're not, you know.
I know, it's not a question and answer.
But we can definitely have a conversation. If you'd like to come into the office, we can have you talk to the, our new attorney. And and perhaps we can explain further on.
Okay, we can do that, but that's why I came in June for people to discuss it and maybe we could add it in effect. It's not a lot of money, but if you charge, there's ten percent of this county pays zero, pays zero in real estate tax, whether they're nonprofits or county or whatever. Okay, that's enough. Everybody have a Merry Christmas. I made my point, I think. You just didn't do nothing on it. Bye.
Thank you. We're still open for public comment.
Good evening, Alan Sarnik, twenty seven ten Franklin Street, Michigan City. I came for one reason, one reason only. Rich, thank you very much. Been a great commissioner. You've been the personification of a public servant. I've enjoyed working with you. I've enjoyed your help on a number of projects. I've enjoyed having you as a colleague and as a client, unfortunately, but also most as a friend. Thank you very much. This county is, will miss you certainly. I know I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open.
Good evening. Scott Cooley, representing La Porte County Project Management. Just wanted to give you an update on a couple of projects we're working on. First, the animal shelter. The water loss, the animal shelter is moving along nice. I think probably I've seen a few of you out there when I've been on on the site, so you've seen it with your own eyes. But the, all of the remediation is done, cleanup is complete. Drywall started going up this week. We started finishing some drywall this afternoon. Everything is moving along, no issues at all there. Now to the jail project, a little bigger project, a little more that we got into. So on the fifth floor, we have cut access into the concrete block so we could investigate the leak. Some of you have been up there to see it. The showers are definitely leaking. The showers, all three of the showers in that block are leaking. I'm meeting Acorn makes those showers. I'm meeting them out here Monday at eleven o'clock. We're going to get in there and see what it takes to get those fixed and take care of that problem. On the fourth floor, we have cut access into that same block cavity to investigate the leak. The leaking pipe has been replaced. Flooring has been removed in the area. All the ceiling that needed to be removed has been removed on the fourth floor. Dehumidifiers are running and we're trying to dry out the block walls. Some of the issue we're having getting the walls dried is the leak from the fifth floor is coming right down to the fourth floor and keeping it wet. We still need to remove some of the pipe insulation in that chase and re-insulate at some point. We are not going to put new pipe insulation in. It's just going to get wet again. On the third floor, we've cut access into the concrete block walls. Ceilings have been removed, the flooring has been removed, dehumidifiers are running, trying to dry it out. Air scrubbers are running to keep the area clean. Again, we're having a hard time getting it dry because of the water coming from the fifth floor. In the booking area, this is probably the most damaged area. Metal stud and drywall containment walls are being built. We started that today to keep everyone safe. We have two dehumidifiers running in that area. Air scrubbers are also running. The ceiling in the kitchen has been removed. The cabinets started coming out today. There's a lot of pipe insulation that is going to have to be removed in there as well. Padded cell number one, all the padding still needs to be removed along with the ceiling. Couple of issues that I see just moving forward. We're getting a lot of stuff torn apart and there's a lot of lead time on a lot of these items. We're removing a lot of the insulation on the pipes and ducts. This stuff needs to go back on. We are only hired at this point to remove, so that that's one issue. Some of the things with the the lead times, though, the doors and hardware that need to be installed on the fifth floor, fourth floor and third floor into those chases. The hardware on there has a two to four month lead time. The hardware needs to be purchased by the county. The company will not sell it to us. So the county will have to purchase it and then have someone install it. Talking to the vendor that jail likes to use on the padded cells. Padded cell is out right now. He said if we sign a contract with him today, we could have him out here probably late February, more likely in March, so.
And that would be for an estimate.
We have an estimate. We do have an estimate.
That would be to do the.
To do the work. So right now, we're looking at probably March as that time just continues to increase. And I know that the sheriff definitely wants to get that cell back in operation. That's all I got.
It's enough.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Rich.
So could we consider making a motion to?
So I've been in discussions with the insurance company regarding the padded cell. The estimate that was sent was not sufficient detail. And so I reached out to Scott's group. And I'm just waiting for the estimate to come back with more detail. And the adjuster has been responding to me in a day. So I'm hoping to be able to get that in the next few days and have an answer for you whether they're going to give us the okay to go ahead and order it.
Okay.
That contractor has been very responsive. I talked to him again this afternoon. I expect that I will have a new price by morning. Not like you need it.
So it was a global price. He didn't provide materials versus labor. And that's what the insurance company needs because this is a time, this is a time and material thing.
Right.
Everything else is looking good.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment? You can come forward, sure.
Ella Kelsey, one one two Abbey Lane, La Porte. I was, I wanted to speak in regards to the director of the Port Animal Shelter. We had, after the last person left, we had an interim person who was promised the job as director, who came in, took over, had the place cleaned up better than it had ever been for years, who came in, cleaned up the medical unit on her own, who was there plus doing another job. She was promised in a message, a message that upon her drug test and her background check, the job was hers. And it didn't turn out that way. And this person stepped up to the plate and made that place look better than it has in months. I've been there since. I'm a volunteer since March. I'm there every day of the week. I see the way it looks, the way it smells and the care the animals get. This person was told this was her job. And it didn't turn out that way. This person came in and worked on Saturdays and Sundays. And she did not get any pay for any of it. I think this needs to be considered when choosing another director. Because what happened to her has not been fair. And what happened to her has not been fair to any of the animals because that is the reason she was there. Because she cares about the animals. That's the reason why I'm there every day is because I care about the animals. But that's just comments I wanted to make because I have seen the unfairness in this to her. And I hope that it doesn't happen to anyone else.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Seeing and hearing no one else, we're going to close public comment. We're going to open up department head comments. Do we have anyone, any department heads that would like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. La Porte County Auditor Tim Stabos. As this will be my last commission meeting as auditor, with my four-year term ending with the turn of the new year, I wanted to publicly thank the citizens of La Porte County for what has been the honor of a lifetime. The opportunity to protect you, protect taxpayer dollars, support the executive and fiscal bodies and their function, keep the system honest, hold public figures accountable when necessary, and open the blinds and shine sunlight on things when necessary. I also want to thank my staff. It's an amazing thing to be the only man on a staff of fourteen women, but I've learned so much. I've learned what a tremendous honor it is to be in such an arrangement. I've learned that solid hiring is everything. I've learned how to build and support a team. I've learned about trusting and believing in your people. I've learned about bringing out the best in them, empowering them and not micromanaging them. And I've learned about the magic that happens when you establish a family environment in an office where people truly care about one another and about taking care of the people of La Porte County. I love my staff and I salute them. And I must say, I was very heartened to hear incoming auditor Mike Rosenbaum tell me.
Please you will not discuss what would, what another department.
We were discussing the transition that he intends to retain all of the staff and he recognizes the positive, dynamic and healthy environment we've created. Thank you, Mike. Finally, while she couldn't be here tonight, I want to thank the unsung hero of the La Porte County Auditor's Office, my chief deputy Rhonda Graves. It's important for me to convey to you that Rhonda has not been given the credit she deserves. Rhonda is a workhorse. Getting it right according to the law and the accounting regs is always the most important thing to her. And an auditor couldn't ask for anything more than a chief deputy. If my job was primarily to be a support figure, Rhonda's was to ensure that everything got done and to give the team ongoing day-to-day direction and support. She also loved helping and facilitating department heads. Rhonda is one of the hardest working people I've known and incredibly caring and compassionate person and someone who loves people. Rhonda, thank you for everything you've done and everything you've put up with, especially from select public officials who thought that degrading you, me or our office was more fun than appreciating and supporting you and your function. In closing, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and peace in the new year. And maybe I will and maybe I won't see you in an official capacity here next year. Thank you and God save La Porte County.
Thank you.
Any other department heads?
Quickly, I have a question for our attorney, Mr. Di Martino.
Yes, sir.
Given the estimates about the padded cell, I was sitting here thinking, would it be, would it be appropriate to give conditional approval pending insurance acceptance to move forward with that padded cell?
It can. The estimate's forty two thousand dollars.
Okay, all right. Then I would make a motion to approve moving forward with repairs and fixing the padded cell pending attorney and insurance approval.
Right, but just so a little bit of a clarification. So that's the folks that are going to put the padded padded walls and the information in the cell. Based on what has happened with the carrier, we still have not come to a scope. And so La Porte County management does not yet have the authority to go ahead and do the rest of the remodel for T H one until the insurance company gets back to us. But this is going to be a two-month lead time in order to get this and we should have that information before. So just so you're all are aware of that.
Very good.
So what are we actually making a motion on? Because when I wanted to make a motion, you said we needed to have the time and material.
Right, so you can make a motion. I think what Mr. Haney said was it's going to be conditional that we can go ahead because you're not going to have another meeting that once the information comes back that we can go ahead and start and at least make the commitment to the company to place the order. So regardless of whether it's going to be covered under loss or not, it needs to be done.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public department head comment is still open. Do we have any other department heads on Zoom? Hearing none. We're going to close department head comments. Moving on to requests, consider recommendation for appointment of Jane Bernard Small Animal Shelter Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andy Hanek from La Porte County Sheriff's Office. I am the Sheriff's Department liaison to the Animal Shelter Board. I've been fortunate enough to serve in that capacity since two thousand and eleven, appointed by now three sheriffs. And we've been in a difficult spot with the shelter for probably the last six months or so, as you know. And we've gone through some troubling times out there. But I would be remiss, first off, if I did not acknowledge the volunteerism that has occurred out there. The folks that come out there seven days a week, take care of the animals and remove, you know, feces and stuff like that, take care of animals, feed them. So again, they are part of our unsung heroes. But obviously, why I'm here tonight, we put together a, the board met and with Monique from H R and we interviewed six or seven applicants for this position. And I can tell you that all six or seven held various qualities and all of them were good candidates and that was a fortunate thing for us. And we had several letters of recommendation for various candidates. What I've told several of the people that wrote those letters are, I would not dismiss that person that you wanted, whether they were our choice or not, but the board was able to interview all of those applicants and see the qualities from all of them. And our recommendation would be for the Commissioners to appoint Rachel Delaney as the director. And a quick background on her, she has a background in a, running a humane society in Indiana, budgeting experience, grant writing experience, all things that I think will propel the shelter to its next level and be able to get the ground running. Again, this is not any type of a slam on any of the other applicants because they were all qualified, but at the end of the day, this was our unanimous vote as the advisory board.
Ask her to come up.
Oh, she's here.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate your support along with the support of the Animal Advisory Board. I know that with my experience and with development of the current team in place along with the amazing dedicated volunteers that we can move the shelter forward in a very positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. With that, I would make a motion to follow the recommendation of the Small Animal Shelter Advisory Board and appoint Rachel Delaney as the new director.
I'll second that and also thank you, Mrs. Delaney, for showing, for coming in yesterday and getting your resume as well and sitting down, having some time to communicate. She's got an impressive background with the Humane Society and I wish you luck. You've got a lot of work ahead of you. But I think things will go well out there and the volunteers have just done an amazing job. I've spoken to quite a few of them and it's been hopefully, we've got a really good year ahead of us out there. And, you know, if you're thinking about adopting an animal for the holidays, just remember it's a lifetime, lifetime of the animal commitment. So while it's great to adopt an animal for the holidays, just keep in mind that, you know, they need to be there year after year. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard. Moving on. Consider permission to purchase four vehicles for the Health Department. Amanda Landyards.
I would like to purchase four vehicles for my department, for my inspectors to be able to use every day. I added up just what we did this year alone in mileage. We drive our own personal vehicles and we drove over fifty thousand miles from January to November. So that's a lot of. So that's a lot of wear and tear on vehicles. Now with our personal vehicles, now with Health First Indiana, we're able to take ten percent, set that aside for capital expenditures like vehicles. So I have the money for next year. So I would like permission to start looking for vehicles.
I would suggest grant permission for you to go to the council and present your case. You've got, you've got your money, right?
Yeah, they have rooted in my budget.
Okay.
For next year.
Well, good, then you don't need to get money from the council, so.
Nope, I got it.
I would make a motion to grant you permission to get your vehicles.
Thank you, sir.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda.
Merry Christmas.
Going to miss you.
I'll miss you too. I'll miss your hugs. You got good hugs.
Okay, under, moving on, under old business, the opening of bids for Franklin Bridge.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andy Skia, Marquis Electric, La Porte County Project Management, 203 East Harrison Street, Michigan City, Indiana.
So just to recap, our last month's meeting was our first bid opening, and we got half a bid from Metropolitan Steel. We all discussed the fact that Marquis Electric or La Porte County Management did not put in a bid proposal because they were the ones who put the bid out. And then we were discussing some of the things that are pressing to be done. And we put it out for bid again, and we allowed them to bid. And lo and behold, the only bid that came in was from La Porte County Project Management. Okay, so the bid package is in order. I would like to hand it back to Mr. Skia, and he can describe the six things. Because I think the words that we used the last month when we discussed this was that, can you give us a smorgasbord to decide what really needs to be done this year so you all can make an informed choice? So, Mr. Skia, I'm going to give this back to you.
Could you read the cover letter for me, please? Is that too much trouble?
Sure. Please reference the following information regarding our submission for the Franklin Street Bridge Fall of 2024/Spring 2025 rehabilitation. We submitted a lump sum package based on priority of repairs and repair necessities for six most critical items, which we feel can still be achieved by the scheduled opening. To complete the six priority repair items referenced here, we will need to mobilize an HJL 110 crane barge that is 110 feet long and 50 feet wide from the port of Ledgington to the port of Michigan City. I also have to obtain pre-bridge closure permit through the Coast Guard that will be necessary to perform the work during the scheduled closed, closure period in hopes our firm would be selected to perform the repairs on your behalf. Had the closure permit not been obtained, it would have been nearly impossible to perform the necessary work in the allotted timeframe. Due to the fact that we are already well within the closure period, which we, which work could be performed, we are requesting immediate approval to proceed so we can secure the necessary materials and release to the bar, release the barge to start its journey to the port of Michigan City.
So when, originally based on our experience working on the bridge and inspections with WJE, we knew there was fifteen items that will eventually need attention due to the pricing that has been spent over the previous years by the commission, the council. We didn't feel it was achievable, not our say, but just on past experience, to present those all to the commissioner of the council at one time for approval, nor this late in the year is there enough time to get that much work done, because we're already into the middle of December. So what we did is take the six priority items that we believe would stop the bridge possibly from passing inspection, that would fail it for inspection for closure, and we can achieve those six items by the opening date of March 15th. And we combined those into one package. The package for that work, which would be the project management portion that I was originally contracted to do, the actual field work, the barge, and all the necessities that go with it, the total for those six items is one million, three hundred twenty-four thousand and one hundred and nine dollars, I believe. Any more than that, we really wouldn't have time to do with the time that's left. When we didn't obtain a full bid last submission cycle, I did re-advertise twice in the paper stating that I was the sole shareholder of both firms and that we would be bidding this time to perform the actual work. At that time, I did reach out to the United States Coast Guard, and I did obtain the closure permit, because that was a process in itself. So if we waited until this evening, if we happened to be successful, by the time we obtained that permit, there would not be time to mobilize the barge and get it down to the port of Michigan City. So I have obtained that permit from the Coast Guard. That is the last item in the packet presented to you tonight. The remaining nine items that are outstanding, those are not the items that would be proposed for the fall of 2025, spring of 2026. That would be the replacement of the tread plates that we, that's what we did the laser track survey for last week when we ran the bridge. So that would be proposed for next fall, because that's more critical even than some of these remaining nine items. So those would be on the docket for years to come. But if the commission should so choose, and we could tackle the six that are proposed for this year, that would put the bridge in good shape to work on the tread plates next year and keep the original plan to keep the structure operational.
Mr. Skia, can I ask one question?
Yes.
I see that, you know, the barge rental in and of itself is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Will that be the only time a barge rental would be necessary? Are you going to be able to knock everything out with that barge rental? Or is that something that's going to have to be repeated?
Most of that will be what's necessary for the barge. And they are requiring, they've never obviously worked with us before, so they are requiring eighty thousand dollars lump sum just to get that equipment to Michigan City to mobilize it. They have to stop in Muskegon, pick up some lifts that we're going to need, and some other equipment to do the work. So that's why it's critical to get approval to get them on their way. I'm not asking for prepayment. I'm happy on the county's behalf. Should you choose tonight to proceed, I'll pay them that money that's required to get this going so we can get it here. My closure permit's good for mid-January, because we talked about the festival of lights. So we don't want to close the road or the park till after the New Year for the city. I have not reached out to them yet to discuss this, because we weren't officially hired. But I did secure the permit from the Coast Guard. So should you so choose to move tonight, I will reach out to the city, let them know, you know, the first week of the New Year, we'll be looking to close the road and make sure their festivals and their activities are over. And then we'll get started on the work right away when our closure permit is engaged.
Motion to approve to proceed with this project. I'm sorry it got held up so long. But you know what we deal with. But for, you guys have been our people for, what, thirty years or so? Yeah.
Nineteen eighty-three, Emily.
There's a lot of people that really appreciate what you do, and we also know you're the expert.
He needs you.
So I make a motion to approve this whole project to move forward.
He needs to consult with him.
But he just, Christmas, almost Christmas, let's have a second, second your motion.
Pressing, go ahead.
Connie.
We got a second.
Don't start with me, sir. I am a grown woman.
Yeah, yeah, that's a second.
We have a motion.
We got a second.
We have a second.
Have a second.
Vote.
Any discussion? He still has another question.
I was wondering, did you get more than one barge quote? I mean, that's, I don't, you know.
We couldn't even find another barge, so we called a couple barges that we knew.
Our secretary is.
The only one that we could even find to consider coming here with the timeline. So we did not, because that's the only option we could find.
With the timeline?
We've never needed a barge for our previous work, so.
And if we're done next season, would they be a lot, with a longer notice, would they be a lot cheaper? Would there be other options?
I cannot, cannot answer either of those, if there would be other options or a lot cheaper, because that's, we couldn't even find another firm to do the field work, let alone to engage with a hundred-foot barge to be here. My concern, major concern, to answer your questions, is no to both those. But if some of these items aren't repaired, it is our opinion the bridge will not pass inspection the coming year. So that's the.
But again, you know, you're here to discuss it with the commission.
I understand respectfully, Commissioners. I'm just trying to answer the questions. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, but the barge is a large portion, four hundred and forty-one thousand, to be exact.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Commissioner Mrazinski, whether it was your military service or your public service, thank you for all the years of that. Greatly appreciated by myself and everyone. Auditor Stables, thank you to you and your chief deputy for your four years. So thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
A pleasure to work with, Andy. And, you know, we've had an issue out at the museum. It's very near and dear to me, you know that. And we've made a lot of improvements out to this year. And one of the things that was really bothering us is that the ornamental lights, they don't put out very much light. And this time of year, by the time the girls get done, or when we have evening events, the parking lot is dark, and we got people leaving work. And we, Marquis Electric has agreed to help us out with that, put up a pole and a light. In the meantime, they're very busy. They put up a temporary light. And I can tell you that everybody at the museum is in your debt. We certainly appreciate that when the going gets tough, Andy gets going. And we really appreciate all you do for the county, and I appreciate having you as a friend.
We're honored to live here and call it home, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Under 10B, consider permission to approach the council for a hundred thousand dollars of ARP funds for sidewalks and park improvements in the town of Hannah. So.
Hello again.
Hi.
Uh, yeah. Well, the earmarked money to do strictly sidewalks in Hannah, and since we don't have a whole lot of pedestrian traffic along the streets, we felt that would be more beneficial to the town and township if we would convert that money over to addition to a walking trail established at the Hannah Community Park, which would be utilized by a lot of people, plus it would keep people off the roads, especially ones that walk in the morning and stuff like that around Hannah. So it's a safety issue as well as a beautification and a community togetherness project.
So one of the things that our concerns was at our last meeting was that the bid was from February of 2023. Tony came into the office. We were able to talk to charity from our Highway Department. We were able to get ahold of Reason Riley. They have agreed to honor the dollar amount that, or the quote that they gave them from February of 2023. I think that that's very noble of them to continue to, you know, with that, with that bid price.
Make a motion to permission to approach the council.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Good luck. So, because we're coming to the end of the year, and we're going to have to have an interlocal agreement. And I know that Hannah, we need to know who the payee is going to be from Hannah. And I need to understand all that, because we're going to have to have that contract signed when you come before the council, if they're going to approve it on the thirtieth, because we need to obligate those funds this year.
The, where the funds are going before the project or for the people that are going?
So if we are going, if the county is going to pay the funds, they're going to pay the funds to some entity.
Okay.
Who the entity is.
The Hannah Township.
Okay, and that would be it? And so Hannah Township is governed by?
The trustee.
The trustee.
And the.
So we'll, so we'll need the information.
Okay, okay. I can provide whatever information you need.
Okay. Christmas is coming up next week, so please get it as soon as possible. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Consider agreement with AM DILTS.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ron Heek, Sheriff from La Porte County. First of all, thank you for your motion of support to move along with this padded cell. It gets used quite frequently, and it's obviously necessary. So I want to thank you for your motion of support to move along with that. I come here tonight with our yearly pension advise advisor agreement that we go through every year. This is more of a housekeeping item. This fee for this pension advisor that we use comes out of our pension fund. So almost no taxpayer dollars are used for this. We have, obviously have the funds available for it, and we ask for your, for your support on this. It has gone through Mr. Di Martino's office as well, too.
Motion to approve and to say that since we've been doing it this new way of investing the money, man, this makes a huge difference. It's great.
Our pension is doing pretty good, and we're very pleased with services that we are getting. When Mr. DILTS became our pension advisor, I believe he's going to be in his twelfth or thirteenth year. Our pension has pretty much doubled, so that's a good thing. That's going to provide some longevity and savings to the county in the long run.
Fantastic. Second to approve.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mrazinski, thank you for your time. It was, it's been a pleasure, and I wish you all the best, and the rest of you, I want to wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. If I could approach for a quick signature while I'm here as well.
Then I believe we'll just need a copy of it signed for the office. There you go.
Do you need an attestation?
Want to sign off?
Do you need an attestation? Do you need one?
Consider resolution authorizing eminent domain proceedings.
That's what I said on the RDC. We just passed this last RDC meeting.
Microphone. Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. We all agreed that we really are not a big fan of eminent domain, but in this situation, our hands are tied, right? I mean, we, we have to do something. It's been a dream for so long to get two railroad, two major Class One railroads to come into KOP. We got the one, and the other one, all we need is this little, it's a driveway. And without going into details, this is the last resort. So I would make a motion that we approve this proceedings.
I'll second that, and it is a fairly small parcel, point three four four acres.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 So this is a resolution, so we also have to.
Can I read it as my final ceremony?
You can. So can we get a motion to read it by title only? Motion to read by title only.
Second.
It'll be seven.
Can I vote on that or no?
Vote on it. Call the vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
This is resolution number 2024 dash, what is it?
Seven.
Length seven, okay. La Porte County Board of Commissioners authorizing eminent domain proceedings. Did you say titled only, correct?
Yes.
That's it? Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Is that that?
Consider Zoom for meetings.
Madam President, this is, for anybody who was unfortunate enough to be on Zoom for the council meeting that was interrupted by apparently some new organization, this Zoom bomb, bombing our Zoom meetings, it's happening all over. From what I was told, they can zoom into your Zoom meeting with whatever, which in our council's case, they were lucky to have pornography, big hit at home, if you're watching with the family. And then they can immediately vanish with no trace. Not good. We started Zoom because of COVID. And COVID's over. Paying approximately seven thousand dollars a year, taxpayer money a year for Zoom. Plus, you have to pay time and a half for an attendant to be here to run the Zoom. And I believe it's, it's run itself out.
it's a, it's run itself out. I don't think it's necessary anymore. In fact, Mr. Haney, at the beginning of this, was the first one to say, I think people need to come to the meeting. You can come to the meeting so you can see your elected people in, in person. And so I, I would, all things considered here with the money, and the COVID is over, would make the motion that Laporte County discontinue Zoom meetings.
I would make a, make a motion to amend your motion to hold this over till next year.
So we have a motion. Just, and then an amendment, do we have a second to the amendment?
No.
So we didn't get a motion to the first one, so that dies.
Correct.
Lacked. And then we didn't get a second on the amendment, so that one dies for?
If there's no second, correct.
In that case, motion to table.
Yeah, I mean, you can table it, but it's not necessary.
So we're just going to keep paying for possibility of being Zoomed with pornography?
I believe, I believe our I T director was able to close the loophole on part of what happened the, the other day, the, I have closed that about a month ago now. So that, that specific attack shouldn't be able to occur from this point moving forward. At least that's, that's the information we were relayed.
Being that we're so close to the end of the, we're, this is actually our last meeting, we have an incoming Commissioner, I would, I would hold it over to the next meeting. So moving on, consider contract with American Fatality.
I reviewed the contract for H R. This is to fill out the necessary tax forms and do the work for the self-insured health insurance plan.
I'll make a motion to move forward with that. I spoke with Monique earlier today about this. She's not able to be here this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Five minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Looking back over the last eighteen years of this fun job, used to be fun. Looking back at some of the things that I've been able to be a part of, to accomplish, you know, back in two thousand four, this was before I was on the council, when we came, did the Veterans Recognition Medal, which we still do, and we've awarded that medal to lots and lots of veterans in Laporte County, to show our appreciation. We, I was part of the council when we built the new building for solid waste, soil and water and extension at M S four, when we built the new building for community corrections. As Commissioner, when we rebuilt the Michigan City Courthouse, when we solved the water problem out of Noack Sub subdivision. I was part of the negotiations to move the EMS base in Laporte. And also, I've worked since my first, pretty much my first meeting as a county council in two thousand seven, to bring the EMS base to Rolling Prairie. Took a lot of doing, a lot of, got turned down a lot, a lot of things before we finally got this done. We finally got the land, thanks to Attorney Shaw Friedman. It was a lot of work, but it was worth it. And we also have the new highway department there. And soon, where the highway department used to be, we're going to have a new county park. I was also part of working on the double track. We ran the sewer line from Laporte to Rolling Prairie, saved some homes, saved some businesses, but most important, we allowed us to build our new library, which I'm very proud of, our new library. And, and Gene Jonas is looking down from heaven saying, thanks for getting that done, because he was, he was, he was not going to let up. We have one rail spur already coming into K O P, soon to be a second one, as soon as this eminent domain gets done. That's another long, long process. I was picked with Don Boger and Jeff Johnson to go to Louisville to negotiate with the Army Corps of Engineers for a easement, to put it in our rail spur. And now we're hooked up with the C S X on one end, and soon to be hooked up with the C N on the north side. That's another long dream, and a lot of people worked on that, not just me. We passed the anti-fraud ordinance for building trades, Connie and I did. They're very fortunate with that, right, Cooley? There's a lot of stuff going on that was not, not good. We, with the grant money, we remodeled the animal shelter, so we got the new lab there. That's, we're going to get it going again, don't worry. Lot of improvements at the museum, the, the new center township fire department, and the new four hundred west road that we named for Bill Hager, Connie and I did, for all the work he started that. The solar project had been taking up a lot of my time lately. We, we had to work within the confines of what were handed, that it was the B Z A given the approval, it was the Plan Commission who wrote the ordinance, but I did get to work on the decommissioning agreement, and also the road use agreement, which we still have one more thing to do on that. Looking back, when I first got on the council, as my wife said, boy, you sure picked a good time to get into politics. That's when we had the big tax mess. It took a lot of doing, but we had Joey Winsky that saved the day on that. A lot of, a lot of work from Joey to get that straightened out, and get it put back where it's supposed to be. And also Joey for saving us from the almost lost two point four million dollars fraud. Thank God for Joey, that she was on top of that and stopped it. You know, over the, over the last eighteen years here, I've seen a lot of things come and go. Most of it was fun. I got to meet a lot, and work with a lot of really good, dedicated people. I, I don't want to miss anybody, but there's a few that I feel that I need to, just to mention. Amanda, I've already said, our, our economic development and R D C with Mitch, Matt, Carlton, Bailey, and Mike, Mike Seitz. Man, I've learned a lot from, from Mike. He's been amazing. Charity taking over the highway department, man, oh, man, who, who knew how good that was going to be? Charity's been amazing. Monique, with her ideas for the food trucks, the camaraderie that went on those, those two days, she's really done an outstanding job. Darlene Hale, who, with, she's pretty much is the glue that keeps this whole place going, except for one other person, right there. I can't say enough about Diane. She is truly, not only would the job not be fun without her, I, I don't think I could do it without her. She is always there. She's doing work for the auditors department, she's doing work for the clerks department, she's doing all of her own work. She, I have a ring device in my, in my office to keep out unwanted people. And I know what time she comes to work. She's there between six thirty and seven in the morning. Her hours start at eight, but she's there between six thirty and seven, and is supposed to get off at four, and Solomon does. She is so dedicated, and I can tell you that this place runs good because of her. In my, in our crowd here tonight, I got a couple people I want to say hello. My youngest grandson, Ben Jones, Ben's a H B A C guy. My oldest grandson, Jacob Bates. Jacob is not only, well, part of his job as a welder is kind of Jack Valter, but he's also the owner, part owner of J and M Crafted Creations. They make some really cool stuff. My daughter, who works for a very well-known consulting company, she's, she's a bright spot in the family. And my wife, who we've been coming up on.
That we're going to have to give sainthood to.
Thirty-two years we're coming up on being married. That's right, isn't it, thirty-two? Yeah. And she's been with me through the council, through all my years of representing the state of Indiana as the chairman of the National Legislative Committee for Veterans for War, my eighteen trips to Washington, D C, all my trips to Indianapolis for the V F W, and also for the county, and all of the good times. And she's been there for all of the, all the other stuff, too, all the backstabbing and lying. So, but she's been my rock to get us through that. And I'm not even going to go into the, to the rest of the bad stuff that we've put up with. Just going to say that it's been a great experience to be Commissioner for, well, council for two terms, and Commissioner for two terms. And I hope to have some time off. With that, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you for your service. Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.